Good evening. I hereby call this regular meeting of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum is present and notice of this meeting was legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Board Member James Ervin is unable to attend tonight's meeting. Please remember that items do not have to be taken in order shown on the agenda, and please join us in turning your cell phones to the silent mode. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and is allowed by Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:01 PM.
The board is now reconvening into open session at 6:00 PM. This month, the spotlight is on Thomas J. Rusk Elementary. Welcome students, glad to have you here tonight. We want to thank you for decorating the bulletin boards at the DSC with the beautiful springtime theme. Really brightens things up. I think we're all ready for some spring. I will call on Principal Paula Harshberger to give our invocation and then she'll introduce the students who will lead us in our pledges as well. Thank you, Mrs. Harshberger.
Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with hearts full of gratitude, Lord, knowing that every good and perfect gift comes from you. Lord, I ask a special blessing on each board member and Mr. Fraley. Lord, I pray that you bless them with wisdom and courage and strength. And Lord, I pray that they always make their decisions with a pure motive and with the best interest of all. Father God, I ask for a blessing on our community and our school district. And I pray, Lord, that we'll always work peaceably together and in the best interest of our students. Lord, any success that we have, we give it to you for your glory and your honor. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, oh, this is the fun part. I've been so nervous about praying and I'm a praying person. Y'all, I have the best, hands down, faculty in Nacogdoches. And at the beginning of the year, our fifth grade team came to me and said, "We really want to start a house council this year." And we have a house system on our campus and it's kind of based on the Harry Potter house system a little bit. We have six guest guidelines that we have. They're be safe, be honest, be respectful, and be responsible. And so when we start, we're going to start a house system. We were going to have like the house of responsibility and the house of respect and all of that sounded really cool. Until you said the house of safety and nobody wants to be in that lame house. And so I still wanted to tie it in with our guidelines. And so what we did was we took each one of those guidelines and each house is one of our guidelines in another language. So we have the house of Aman. Is Aman in the house?
Stop, think, act.
And Aman is Somali for safe. And then we have the house of Kulianna. Is Kulianna in the house?
Ooh, ah, seize the day.
And Kulianna is Hawaiian for responsibility. And then we have Onesto. Is Onesto in the house?
Stand up for truth. I'm still standing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Onesto is Italian for honest. And then we have our lone member tonight from the house of Respectuoso. And Respectuoso is Spanish for respectful. Is Respectuoso in the house?
All day, every day, twenty-four seven.
Such good house members, such good friends. So I'm going to turn it over to the fifth grade teachers and let them introduce you to our house council.
Hello, my name is Lourdes Leon.
Hello, my name is Gabby Ocampo.
Hello, my name is Peyton Jackson. We are Aman. Stop, think, act.
Hello, my name is Atasha Sanchez.
Hi, my name is Atavia Garrett.
Hello, my name is Aria Edwards and we are
Kulianna.
Ooh, ah, seize the day.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Tolbar.
Hello, my name is Brock Albert.
Hello, my name is Erica Yon and we are
Onesto.
Stand up for truth. I'm still standing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hello, my name is Keaja Giles from Respectuoso.
All day, every day, twenty-four seven.
Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. Salute, pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, students, for being here. We enjoyed it. It's a great way to start the meeting off. And the parents as well that came and facilitated the transportation. We're here for the students as well. Thank you for that. All right, that's going to bring us to our celebrations and information items. First off is Mr. Les Leinbarger with the recognition portion of our meeting. We are fortunate tonight to be recognizing both students and employees.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Fitch, board members, interim superintendent Fraley. Student recognition is always a highlight and once again, that's so tonight. I'm going to go ahead and ask Dr. Crespo to come on up here. He's our high school principal at Nacogdoches High School. And tonight, we're going to be recognizing three of his students that have qualified for state competitions. Tonight, we're going to recognize Chloe Camacho, who qualified as a powerlifter. And she is the first female powerlifter from Nacogdoches High School to make it to the state competition where she finished ninth. And then we're going to also recognize Stuart Beal and Farija Satana, who qualified for the state CX debate competition. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Crespo here and we're going to present the students with some certificates and also recognize their coaches. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Fitch, board members, interim superintendent Fraley. I'm very excited to be here tonight to support and present our students. It is a great day to be alive. It's a great time to be a dragon. Right now, I'm actually cloning myself three times today. So I'm really over in Maybank, Texas for our girls soccer playoff game. And I'm over at the high school as well for our track tournament, our dragon relays over there. And then I made sure that I was here today as well to support and represent our students here and coaches from Nacogdoches High School. So first, I want to bring up Chloe Camacho. You want to come on up, as well as her coaches, Coach Jeffries and Coach St. John. Y'all want to come on up as well. Like Les said, Chloe is the first female powerlifter to make it to state in the history of Nacogdoches High School. We are very, very proud of her. Thank you, guys.
Chloe, we are very proud of you. It is a pleasure to have you here. I've been following you in the newspapers, so it's a pleasure to have you at the meeting tonight.
We are very, very proud of her. She is a very quiet warrior.
And are Chloe's parents here this morning?
They are here. Chloe's parents are here as well, standing up and being recognized.
Often, we forget, but it takes a lot of support from family when you're a student athlete. Because it's a lot of dedication on the student's part, but the parents are also very dedicated in making sure they get to practice and get to competitions. Thank you for being here.
What was interesting, a little funny story about Chloe. And I try to get out and get to know as many kids as possible. And I talked to her a bunch of times and congratulated her and presented her at a pep rally. And I think it was Monday this week, they were out getting ready for the late bus and she goes, "I didn't know you were the principal." And I was like, "All right." That's good endgame.
And Dr. Crespo, remind me, what classification is Chloe?
What classification in the weight class?
No.
Oh, she's a junior, right?
Junior. So we can expect
Excuse me, sophomore.
Sophomore.
Expect her to be talked about for a couple more years.
Fantastic.
Her to finish first or second next year.
We hope to get the opportunity to invite you back.
All right, next up, I want to call up Stuart Beal and Farija Satana up, as well as their coach, Mrs. Veronica York. What's also interesting about these guys, they made it to state for the CX debate UIL tournament. I was at a powerlifting tournament when I got the text that they were over at SFA competing and we're going to find out where they placed. And I raced over there as fast as I could to support them and of course, they finished first at that tournament. That was great. Super, super proud of these guys. They do great things here. So give them a round of applause. Are your parents here as well, guys?
Farija and Stuart, are you guys thinking about pursuing legal degrees? Maybe? I think you've got some promising futures ahead of you. Congratulations. We're so proud of you. And their parents are here as well, I see. I'm looking for them in the
If I may, I just wanted to brag on them a little bit because I know we always have athletes that are dedicated. But these students have gone above and beyond. We have had competitions that go well into the morning. We show up at 2:30 in the morning and they get prepared for the next day at 5:30 to take off. So it's a lot, a lot of dedication that they have put into this. And they themselves even took themselves to camp to better themselves. So it says a lot about them and what they want. And expect to see them again here next year. Thank you.
Wonderful. Great things ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Crespo, Ms. York, and thank you, students as well. Board, some of the best things I do here at this job is to go out and visit with these students. And when I went and visited with the CX debate team, they are so, they're so easy to visit with. They would start answering questions before I even asked them. And then when I went to get a picture of Chloe at the weight room, she was moving so much weight in there. And it's really impressive to watch, but then the coaches got her and brought her over for the picture and she's just got this winning smile. It's great. So it's great to have these kids here tonight. Moving on, March is National Social Work Appreciation Month. And earlier this month, the week of March 4th, was school social worker appreciation week. And tonight, we have our social workers here and I'm going to bring up Katie Mengia. She has got a presentation to make and she's going to introduce the rest of her coworkers as well. Katie?
So good evening, President Fitch, board members, interim superintendent Fraley. Thank you for giving us a few minutes tonight to talk about what NISD social workers are doing in our schools. See if I can get, technology is not our strong point as social workers, by the way. So as you said, March is National Social Work Month. So that means that across the country, organizations and individuals are recognizing the ways that social workers elevate the communities that we serve. So the NISD social work team encourages you to visit the social work wall that's in the hallway outside the bathrooms where you can see some comments from students, parents, and staff about how they see social workers impacting our school and community. And there's a picture of it up there. We worked really hard on putting that up. So what we do is we link the home, the school, and the community to provide resources that address the emotional, social, and educational needs the emotional, social, and educational needs of our students. We work to remove barriers to student success by using this whole system. And that's really what makes us unique, is that we're using all of those elements. It's often said that social workers wear many hats, and that's true. As you can see, sometimes we might wear our planner hat, planning school-wide systems that support students who've experienced trauma, or planning groups to build resilience and interpersonal skills. We also wear our liaison hat when we're serving as a liaison for students who are experiencing homelessness or in foster care. We wear our coordinator hat when we reach out and connect with volunteers and community agencies to meet the physical, emotional, or legal needs of our families. We wear our program developer hat when we're working on parent programs, such as Dragon Dinners or the Empowering Parents Program, or social-emotional programs that build students' abilities to do well in and out of school. We wear our educator hat when we provide trainings and consultation to our staff and community leaders. And we wear our counselor hat when we're a supportive, listening ear for our students, our staff, and for our families. We also provide counseling to students through special education services. These are just a few examples, because it's impossible in five minutes to list all of the work that all five of us are doing in all of our campuses. Each social worker's work looks very different because we respond to the needs on our campuses and because the skills and experiences that each of us bring to the table are very different and unique. So we've had the opportunity, for the past two years, to expand our impact, thanks to the T-Tips Grant, which created two new social work positions, one at Fredonia, one at Carpenter Elementary Schools. I'm at Fredonia. So these positions are unique because these two social workers, under the grant, work specifically on that one campus. But at the same time, we're part of the district's social work team. The other social workers are serving multiple campuses. So I want to take a minute to look at the McMichael-Feder pattern and some numbers, because I know a lot of us in here like numbers, so that we can see the impact. So the first year... These are numbers from 2016 to 2017. So this is before the grant took effect. Then, from 2017 to 2018, that was last school year. That was the first year of the T-Tips Grant, the first year that we had the grant-funded social workers at Fredonia and Carpenter. So you can see that not only did the numbers increase on those two campuses, they increased on the other campuses as well. And that's because the social worker who served this Feder pattern is able to reach more students. She has more time or capacity to reach the other campuses as well. And she still continues to work at Fredonia and Carpenter, but most of the students on those two campuses are the grant-funded social workers. So the number of students increased dramatically, but also the kinds of services that we are offering shifted. So we're able to spend more time on preventative programs, such as groups, parent support programs, things like the Dragon Dinners, that I know some of you have heard a little bit about, or parenting workshops, car seat events, where we were able to give out car seats to families that didn't have them. But also, the intensiveness of the services provided has changed. So we're now offering counseling through special education, something we weren't doing before. Our case management and other services, we're able to really invest more time, more ongoing contact with the families in ways that we weren't doing before, just because we have more capacity. I can personally speak to my experience at Fredonia Elementary. It was previously a campus with low referrals, not because of a low need, but just because the culture of each campus is very different, the culture of the staff, the families, the kids. But because I'm fully present just at that one campus, that's enabled me to build deep relationships with the Fredonia staff and parents. So the number of referrals has increased with this increased presence. And I'm able to work really closely, for example, with RAP. We work day-to-day to look at students with behavior and attendance concerns. And we're working together to meet those families' needs. Teachers and students see me every single day walking up and down the halls, and that really makes a big difference. So the next section up there is this school year, 2018 to 2019. That's just from the fall semester. So that's just August through December. So you can see that we're already well on our way to serving a lot of students on all of these campuses. So these are fabulous NISD social workers. I'm going to have them stand up now. They're right over here. We've got Lauren Ivey Seja, Ruby Ramon, and Keesha Tutte. We're missing one member of our team, Eddie Harwell. He's at a conference right now that sounds like a lot of fun. They do a lot of ropes courses and things like that. So he's probably having a lot of fun right now. So I encourage you that, as you see these people throughout what's left of the month of March, congratulate them, or us, in our month. I also want to mention that there's a bill that will be heard, that's in process right now in the Texas Congress to include social workers in the Texas Education Code as one of the many professions that provides services in Texas schools. So currently, there's no mention of social workers, even though counselors, nurses, and other helping professions are included. So we encourage you to reach out to your representatives, as we have, to support House Bill 239 and Senate Bill 209. We also want to thank Ms. Audrey Young for testifying last month before the Texas Public Education Committee on behalf of these bills. You can actually see a video of that online. It's pretty cool. So, in closing, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate the school board and our district's leadership for prioritizing having social workers in our school. You can ask any of our campuses, and they will tell you what an important asset these services are for our students. So I encourage you to seek us out. We'll be happy to talk with you more about the ways that we're working to support our students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Katie, before you run off, I want you to know that we truly do appreciate all of the work of your team. And I know that we've got a couple of board members who wanted to say something very special to you. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Montoya first.
Well, you know I have to speak because I am a social worker, and I will die a social worker. I came to the district in 2000. There was two social workers for all the schools. Besides doing social work, I had to interpret and translate for the entire school district. I know that we have... You speak Spanish, and I know that Ruby speaks Spanish. And because of our population of Hispanic kids. But what I want to say about social workers, that you guys are part of the foundation in our district that supports students to be able to be successful in their education. I have never found a social worker in the school district that has not worked very diligently, hard, not just with the kids, but with the staff, with administration. I fought a lot of fights during the 13 years that I worked for the district. And I want to see social workers in every one of our schools because I think they're an asset to have on campus. I was able to work very closely with principals, which you guys do. You work with counselors. You work with everybody in the school district, even with cafeteria workers. Everybody, everybody in the school. So I applaud you because you guys are worth your weight in gold. And I'm happy to see that you guys are doing a lot of services to our kids and continue the good work because I'm super proud of you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Dr. Gromen, did you have a few words, sir?
I don't think words can express the appreciation we have for your sacrifices for our students that are children. And we thank you for every bit of your hearts that you've given away to make them more successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to applaud you.
Thank you again. And now is the interim superintendent's report. Mr. Frayley?
I get to follow that, right?
Yeah? No pressure.
I need help. Can you help me? Thank you all again for all that you guys do and the magic that you really seem to work many, many times for our families and kids. Thank you all so much for all of that. We recognize the students tonight who made the state competitions. And this is just part of what we're doing in Nacogdoches ISD. A lot of good things are happening here. Well, the next few months, we'll have the kids up here to be recognized for their success, be it UIL, or be it a number of different categories, academic CTE programs, things like this. We're excited about the work that our students are doing, the support they get from our staff and the teachers. It's just really great to celebrate all the good things happening in Nacogdoches ISD. I also want to thank the staff of Nacogdoches ISD. We are a top-10 donor to United Ways Campaign this year. So thank you all for all that you guys have done. In fact, I know they surpassed their goal. And I know a lot, in part, because of the staff. And we all just thank you all for that. Also, I will have our next huddle time, Tuesday of next week, at the Civic Center. We're very excited about this one. I'll do a rundown of where we are with our bond projects. And we'll talk about the next phase of our time in Nacogdoches together, where we really look at how we are, as a community, supporting our kids and our families and helping our kids imagine, dream, realize their dreams with their daily decisions. Me and them don't always make a connection between their hopes and dreams and their daily decisions. We must have the community rally around them to help them and appreciate that. So that's the gist of next week. So y'all come on up and have a lot of fun. Have a lot of fun. I'm excited about that. We hired at the high school a new football coach and athletic director, Darren Allman. He's at the track tonight. But we hope to get him here for y'all to meet him next month. We're excited about the work. He doesn't start full-time till next month, but he's been here for the past three weeks, working on his own, just helping out. And we really appreciate Dr. Crespo's leadership in finding him and having you be someone that folks want to work with. So we appreciate that. We're just very excited about that. And I want to call up Dr. Audrey Young to come up and make a special presentation.
Good evening, President Fitch, Board members, Superintendent Frayley. It's my privilege to announce, on behalf of the American Association of University Women, Nacogdoches branch, that Board President Fitch has been selected as Public School Advocate Honoree as part of the Woman of the Year program. President Fitch's thoughtful and deliberate demonstration of leadership by encouraging a community mindset that truly values education and learning, as well as serving as a role model by advocating in the best interest of students at Nacogdoches ISD, is what made Mrs. Fitch the top candidate for this honor. Thank you for your service to the students and to the district. Mrs. Fitch will be formally recognized ceremoniously on Tuesday, April 16th, at SFA. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm speechless. And humbled.
Well, and thank you, Dr. Young. And I want to add my voice, too. I really appreciate working with you. And as Board President, working with me, we talk a lot. And so I do get to see your heart in action behind the scenes, and it's authentic. I really appreciate you, ma'am.
Well, thank you. Those are kind words. It is not a singular job. It is a team. Everybody in this room and beyond. A lot of mama bears working to make our schools a better place. Thank you. I'm honored.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Get me out of here yet. All right. We're going to move on to the public comment section of our agenda. We did not have anyone sign up to speak tonight, so we will move on through that to the consent agenda. All right. Unless removed from the consent agenda, all items listed will be acted on with one motion. If there is a board member who wishes to discuss an item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter, and it will be set aside for further discussion and a separate vote.
Madam President, I move the board approved the February 2019 board meeting minutes.
Okay. Let's see. Let me make sure here.
This is all part of consent.
Yes, it's all part of consent.
Could I ask you to potentially amend your motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety?
Yes, the board approved the consent agenda, February 2019.
Thank you, sir.
Second?
I second.
All right. I have a second by Mr. Montoya. Before I take the vote, I believe I'd heard that David Koontz may be in attendance tonight. Is he here with us tonight? All right. I'm not seeing him. All right. I wanted to... If he was here, I wanted to acknowledge him and the Nacogdoches High School baseball boosters for their very generous donation that they're making to enhance the facilities there at our high school. All right. If there's no more discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now proceed to the Discussion Action Agenda. All items in this section will be voted on separately. Our first item tonight is the consideration and approval of the design development for the projects for Emeline Carpenter Elementary School, Nacogdoches High School CTE renovations, and Malcolm Rector CTE Center, and the Dragon Stadium press box. Do I hear a motion?
Madam President, I move the board approved the design development of Emeline Carpenter Elementary School's new campus, Nacogdoches High School CTE renovation, Malcolm Rector CTE, and Dragon Stadium Press Box, as documented in Design Development Book dated March 28, 2019.
Second motion.
Thank you, sir. So we have a motion by Mr. Neramond, a second by Mr. Neal. Any discussion?
Madam President, if I could just want to thank the facilities team, Brother LaRue, of his work, and also our architectural team from PBK. We have someone here with us tonight. They're now sending a job of presenting their work that was very easy to do. I know the design development was passed Monday at our general review. Very, very pleased with what they have done and helped lead us to. I want to thank the staff who've been involved as well. And we're very excited about the work, and it's just about to take off. So thank you all for being with us again tonight. Appreciate it.
And thank you for these beautiful document books, too. You can't wait to study them in more detail. The presentation on Monday was beautiful. All right, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. If you're in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. If you're in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
You're serious now.
That's right. That takes us to Item 7B, consideration of addition of conductive energy devices to the police use of force continuum. Do I hear a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to move that we approve the addition of the conductive energy devices to the NISD Police Department continuum.
I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. Winslow, seconded by Dr. Gromen. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
It's not carries with a vote five to one, Holly. Next item on the agenda is 7C, consideration of scheduling a special meeting to canvass the May 4th, 2019 election. Oh, I didn't let me bring my calendar up, Holly. We had looked at Monday.
Monday, May 13th, at noon.
Yes, Monday, May the 13th, at noon. Is that still agreeable with everyone's schedule?
Yes.
All right. Then I will entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move the board to schedule a special meeting to canvass the result of a May 4th, 2019 election and elect board officers for 2019, 2020.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Nerimond, a second by Mrs. Winslow. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It carries unanimously. Item 7D, discussion regarding the 2019 TASSA-Tasby Legislative Conference. We had a fortunate opportunity to have two board members attend this legislative conference, and I'd ask if they might fill us in and give us a presentation on the...
I don't want to steal your thunder. Okay.
Well, I think I had the opportunity to drive with Dr. Gromen all the way to Austin, and we had quite a wonderful trip. We stopped and ate a lot of good stuff on the way. But when we got to Austin, I think the essence of what we attended was amazing, to be able to talk to other school board members, to talk to legislators, to talk to... We were able to go and see Mr. Clarity, and I saw when you... We were hoping to get to sit when you were going to present, but we weren't able to. But we were able to go and see Mr. Clarity and talk to him about the House bill for the school funding and for the social workers, and got to see some other representatives. And Mr. Clarity had us for 15 minutes in his office, and I got to take a picture in his chair. So that was pretty cool. But I think overall, the experience that we had, we learned a lot of things about being school board members, you know, what we need to be doing to make our district the best that it can be. It was a very, very learning experience for me. I really enjoyed it, and I'll let Dr. Gromen say what he wants to say about it.
I think he's covered things very well, but I can say that you have to politics and the politics. And so soon to be, Dr. Young introduced us to the president of Tasby. And when we said we're from Nacogdoches, he kind of had this look. But then, when we said, "Mr. Alton Fraley is our superintendent, and we just passed a bond, he and all the other guys around him," things changed. There is a difference in the way they think of us now. So we have to be thankful, because this is not just what's happening here. This is what's happening in this room and throughout this community. And I think that's what needs to be shed amongst ourselves, to not break arm, patting ourselves on the back, but to congratulate ourselves, because we're walking on solid ground, and we're moving forward for the benefit of our students and our community. And that's what we learned and got to participate in at the legislative meeting. It was great.
Amen.
Well, and thank you, both of you gentlemen, for taking time away from your schedules to go and represent the board in Nacogdoches ISD with our legislators.
And there is a little inserts for you to peruse about what's really going on.
Thank you so much. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Item eight, I will entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move adjourned.
So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Winslow.